I will call, well, I'm not calling, I will call the continuation of the November first committee of the whole meeting order, I guess. Uh, tennis at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent with Council John and Council Hughes virtual. We're gonna go straight into new business, which is just um an opportunity for council members to ask any further questions they have about um the budget. You have, there's no more from staff, right?
That's correct, George. We have no presentations most of our online, so we'll answer what we can and everything else we'll take because of the item.
All right, Council Hughes, you had emailed some, so I'll go to you first.
Uh, thank you. Um, okay, so I'll just kind of go through them one at a time here. I know you guys have had limited heads up. I didn't, I forgot that yesterday was the start. So the, the, the trail between Botanica, the Oakmont Trail that we discussed. And to correct me if I'm wrong, but I felt like when this came up for public hearing, the developer had offered to build part of that trail. Am I wrong? I could be remembering it wrong.
You're not wrong. That's what I remember.
So Diane Anger, if you want to throw it over to Daniel.
Sure. Yeah. So um, thanks for the question, Council Hughes. So um, the trail that is actually behind Boudreaux Development that goes from um uh Boudreaux Road through to Oakmont Trail is a public on public land. It's um a public trail. Trails within Boudreaux Development is what the developer would be responsible for, but I will pass it over to Danielle and Amanda. Um, and can you add to that, please?
Thanks for the question, Council Hughes. Amanda, do you want to just go in and give a bit of an explanation?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, thank you for the question, Council Hughes.
Why don't we just start with you?
On Oakmont, maybe that's fair. Um, so for segment three, which is the segment that goes from Boudreaux behind the Botanica and all the way to the Oakmont Children's Bridge. Or Oakmont Pedestrian Bridge, there's no, not two of them. Um, so the, the trail crosses as we've worked through um with Boudreaux Developments over the last couple of years. The trail um goes on public lands. The existing little kind of stub that's there is on public lands has existed since, as far as we know, the late eighties, early nineties. Um, that is fully city. Um, the city, um, through the discussions that we've had, should the project be funded? Boudreaux will pay for the paving of the trail that crosses their private property. So we've negotiated an easement with them that is um, that runs with the land and is, is binding. Um, and they will pay for the construction of the trail as it crosses their lands. So the city basically will take from the Oakmont Hill project to the edge of the Boudreaux property up, up on the bank. Um, Boudreaux will take responsibility for the trail as it crosses their land east to west. Um, and then we'll carry it forward from um the edge of the Riverbank Landing property to the pedestrian bridge. So they are paying for a part of it, um, and it is specifically the part that crosses their land.
So as a follow-up, Amanda, um, what I'm wondering is, uh, maybe too late for this project, but if a developer were to build something on the trail, who's responsible to build the sidewalk in front of their property?
So I can share my understanding and then I would invite my planning or development engineering colleagues to comment as well. Um, so the city, um, in this situation, normally we wouldn't be building trails within private property. Um, this was a good compromise, um, because the only way we could accomplish connectivity would be actually to bring it down into the river and do boardwalking, which is incredibly expensive and very high maintenance. Um, so with Boudreaux allowing us to build the trail on their land, um, that saves a lot of costs and is actually much more consistent with how we build the Red Willow Trail system. Um, the developer builds all of the sidewalks. In this particular case, this is a multifamily site um under, I believe, a condo board, but maybe I'll ask Adrian or uh Donnie to speak to kind of what happens.
Like on St. Albert Trail, when we did the improvement strategy and we wanted sidewalks along the trail everywhere, I remember the McDonald's came down, remember the, the old one? And then they, they rebuilt it. They were required to put in a sidewalk and same, I remember there was some complaints from the developer that did the area in Good Life, because so I, I believe in Adrian, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the developer that puts in the sidewalk, because it's required by our engineering standards now.
Uh, that's, that's correct, Mayor. We typically do um require that that type of infrastructure be a part of the development agreements um so that we have continuity of uh trail systems, sidewalk systems, et cetera. Otherwise, we'd have a lot of gaps.
So I guess, I realize this is multifamily. It's also a very large site for density for rate of return on uh investments. And so if the I understand that the, the trail is public property, but so is sidewalk technically. So is it because you don't have a policy about the trail that we are asking them to do it, everything in front of their property, not just what's overlapping with their private air, uh, private property, but just actually everything that covers over that area? Because I, I'm having a difficult time with the idea that if they build a sidewalk, they have to pay for it, but if they do a trail and there is no sidewalk, that they still don't have to pay for it.
Yeah.
So is it just because, because I, if, if that's the case, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any plans or could we have plans to truly try to close that loop? For any other development that may occur so that the developer, if they don't build a sidewalk, they have to build a trail, and if they're bordering both, they build both. Like if there's, we could just easily put a sidewalk back there and call it a sidewalk, and then they're responsible for that. So um that's the challenge I'm having right now is just uh that we are building something pretty heavy slope into the area, which is expensive and I just, I didn't get the impression that, and Mayor, you can tell me if you got the different impression, but I didn't get the impression that they were just building what was on their land. I got the impression they were going to build a portion in and out of it as well. Um, so is there any intention or could we have an intention to close that loophole?
Thanks for that question, Council Hughes. Amanda, please, you know, add into um whatever uh what I'm going to provide here. Um, really, the, the Red Willow Trail serves the entire public of the city of St. Albert, so this is meant to be a connectivity to our recreational trail system. Um, as Mr. Slatt spoke to, I think that there's a difference between a sidewalk serving a, a residence and a trail system, but I'll let Adrian maybe provide some more context to that. I think the intent was that they provide, they pair paying for the trail on their property that connects into our trail, which provides for the public good of the, of the community as a, as a bigger overarching, urging um offering to the community for recreational connectivity through the trail system. And Amanda, Adrian, please feel free to add to that.
Yeah, I would invite Adrian to speak to closing the loop, but in terms of this project, I think part of the complexity was, of course, that um the existing trail system doesn't actually touch this property. Um, you know, the, the trail stub behind Botanica is a little bit of an oddity um that was done many, many years ago, and this isn't an infill development, so um, it was a lot of conversation and negotiation with the developer versus um in terms of what must be done versus what should be done versus what was scope of the existing Oakmont Trail project, which well predates um the Riverbank Landing application. Um, Adrian, did you want to speak to kind of infill and how that works?
Uh, yeah, I guess just my comment is that my understanding was that this was the connection to the pre-existing network, so that was, that was why um, the developer pays for that connection piece, and then we would pay for the rest of the, the network system itself. I understand your question, Council Hughes, and but yeah, that, that was, that's my understanding is how we kind of arrived to where we are today is that we were already going ahead with um, the network and the developers just paying to connect into the network.
Okay, I realize that it's too late now, the development agreement's been um issued, but uh, that's maybe something you want to look at going forward. I understand there's connectivity, but there's connectivity on St. Albert Trail too that serves all the public, this connectivity in Boudreaux that serves all the public. Uh, so it's the same thing, it's just a different surface area that's actually cement versus asphalt. That's literally the only difference here. Um, and perhaps the scenery, so I guess it's like if it's not pretty scenery, then they have to pay, and if it says, then they don't, so it doesn't make any sense. So um, this might be something that we could look into uh for future development is just that if their property developed, orders the trail, that they can pay for the trail, because it's expensive for us to pay for it. So um, that's just the first thing. So thank you for that. Um, next question, I don't think I have any more for you, Adrian, for now, so you're off the hook. The Lakeview Business Area, do we actually have any interest in that? I mean, we're about to put a bunch of money into an area structure plan. Uh, like, I'm assuming that we've had some, some people interested at least in, in developing on that land? And I'm asking for names, I'm just asking if there actually is any interest at all in pursuing it. It's nothing to keep to move forward.
There's tons, Council Hughes, I think we've heard that a few times, yeah.
Okay.
Just some mic pop on, go ahead.
Ericsson is on it, I'd ask him to comment very broadly, and there'll be an in-depth discussion tomorrow as well.
Yeah. Okay, so we already have quite a bit of interest. So I guess the question that I still can't understand is if we already have a lot of people at the door that want to um, build on that land, why we have to spend half a million dollars to promote it?
All right. Mike, do, do you want to, do you have any broad comments on the current level of interest? I would say the current level of interest is probably academic until we have an ESPN.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say there, there are degrees of, of interest and um uh, when, when parties are exploring opportunities, you know, they sort of have to work through different stages, and so there's a lot of work that goes into each of the, each of the stages when a party is considering um locating or investing in an area like that. So a large part of our role is to um, not only attract, but work with groups through certain processes as, as they're making their investment decisions. And depending on whether we're talking about developers or businesses, you know, slash end users, they're going to have different requirements. And, and we may be working with, uh actively working with uh landowners or developers to attract those businesses and, and end users as well.
So the current interest that we have, are they basically um not being able, we're not able to meet the, the needs of the current business? Are they being turned away when they have questions or not able to address their concerns right now?
Uh, I, I think, I think it depends on what we're talking about. It's, it's um, I guess it's tough to sort of speak in generalities, but we, we have a finite capacity of individuals within our department that, that serve in that function, so they have a finite amount of time. If all of their time is tied up with current opportunities, they're limited in terms of the, the new opportunities that, that they can pursue. Right? So we feel that by, by adding additional lands, by, by adding additional opportunity, there's going to be a significant amount of work that's going to go into the front end portion of that. And what we're proposing is, is what we feel is a, a low-risk, three-year term investment to sort of ramp up at a time where we feel we're going to need uh the most work and, 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 and heavy lifting to go in, into um making Lakeview uh adjustment ready.
Okay, I might have some follow-up BIRs on this still, just heads up, but I'm not going to ask you for uh pointing questions for a second. Um, so I know, and so I think that's it for you right now, Mike. So again, we're gonna, you're off the hook now. Um, so again, to Diane, they can pick which Diane you like, I think Diane Anger. So the the fifty-meter pool is service place, like there was the discussions, but all those numbers are quite outdated. I don't expect you to have those numbers updated this second. I'm just wondering how difficult it would be to get um, get a reestimate done of the costs. We're not redoing the design, we're just trying to figure out how much would it cost? How challenging would it be to do that?
Thanks, Council Hughes, for the question. Uh, so we actually didn't scope or price out a fifty-meter pool. It was a twenty-five-meter pool at Service Place. Um, and so that would take some um time and money uh to actually do that full, so. But we do know that um with fifty-meter pools, they are quite heavy in terms of cost of capital and operating. And we know that in the region, we have two, and we have one potentially coming online at Lewis Farms. And um, the pool serves more of our regional um area as opposed to a small municipality. Um, that has sort of been the, that's been the sort of state of fifty-meter pools have gone. But maybe I'll hand it over to Danielle um to see if you'd like to add.
No, I think that's great, Diane. I think that we did do that initial planning work in October of twenty eighteen uh to look at the twenty-five-meter pool for Service Place. So we, as Diane said, we'd never completed the cost study um on a fifty-meter pool. We do know anecdotally though that capital and operating costs are a little bit higher. We did do some, um, also some engagement through the community amenities planning, and we did hear from a small number of individuals supporting a fifty-meter pool, but none of the aquatics groups that we spoke with were strongly advocating or identified a fifty-meter pool need. So that was another factor that when we put the twenty-five-meter pool recommended at Community Amenities, that was a factor in that decision as well.
Okay, so how difficult would it be to update the twenty-five-meter pool estimate?
I would say we'd have to get you some more information on cost and timing to be able to do that, so we'd probably take that as a BIR if you want us to investigate that work. We could get you some timing and cost of completing that work.
You know what? I'll put it just for it as an IR, because you guys, there's no way you can get this done in the next week, and I wouldn't expect you to have that done. That's just not fair. And if we were to move forward anything, I wouldn't expect to happen during budget. So um, I'll just put it for as an IR just to get an updated cost scope if we can, and just plus or minus whatever your confidence level is. Would that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So um, I'm just going to skip the transit for now because I don't want to go on camera for a second. Um, the White Spruce Forest, okay, maybe you're back to you, Danielle, you thought you were off, you're back. Um, the White Spruce Forest, are we completely finished with um money that's been spent so far on the White Spruce Forest? Or do we um have stuff that we still have to loose ends to wrap up with what's been approved to date?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Council Hughes. The majority of that project is complete and it is operational now. There is another phase of work, and I'll let Ms. Wild maybe give an update on the next phase of work that is in consideration for uh Red Willow Park West and then the third phase of the park development. So Amanda, do you want to give a bit of an update there?
Yeah, of course. Uh, so for phase one of the Red Willow Park West Meadow View, which is uh great on White Spruce Park, uh as Ms. Pope Lovey said, we are substantially complete. We are holding a little bit of contingency just for issues and things that come up. Um, we know that Hogan Road probably needs a little bit of a scrape down if um, just because it's gets quite rough in the spring as we've responded to earlier this year. Um, and then phase three of the project um really is reliant on the area developer um upgrading what is the existing Hogan Road into a local road standard. Um, that's part of the development process um so that we have um access um and servicing to create a parking lot at the north end. Um, the other piece of the phase three um is interpretive programming for the site, so you'll notice there's very little in terms of educational signage or interpretive elements quite yet. Um, and that's because we wanted more time to develop the stories that should be told in the, in the forest and the educational processes, be they digital or physical or whatever that may look like. So we have included that in our phase three scope as well. Um, and then the third element that we do have in our phase three scope is investigation of putting permanent washrooms. They do need to go in the parking lot area because we have to keep them out of the floodplain, which is the vast majority of the forest. Um, so that's the third kind of element of that phase three, and timing uh for that is really dependent on that road upgrading.
Do we have an idea? We have no idea when that road will be upgraded? Anything?
Yeah, we do work with GenStar, um, sometimes even daily. Um, so uh last, so um apologies, brain just came back from holidays. Um, the, we are in discussions, they may upgrade that road as early as next year, um, or it may be two or three years from now. Uh, it really depends on the pace of development. Um, they do have some approvals for the very north end of that road to upgrade that um, which will start in twenty-four. Um, they may decide to continue the improvements all the way down the length that we need improved, or they may hold off until they're ready for, for their development closer to the forest. So we're a little bit in a holding pattern, but we are in regular communication with development engineering and GenStar Developments uh to make sure that our information is as current as we can possibly get.
And maybe Ms. George or uh Mr. Reed have more comments to add, but I'm not sure.
Thanks, Amanda. I think Amanda is right on. I can probably ask John Reed, he may have the most up-to-date uh information on that. John, if you have anything to add, please go ahead.
Thank you, Donnie. No, there's nothing more to add. Amanda is correct. Um, working with the developer, we're hoping that they do the work next year as per their development um and their plans, but it's up to the market for them to develop further to the south there.
So the parking lot, is that, we don't have the funding for the parking lot yet either, right? So it's not like we have the money, we're just waiting for the road. We'd have to approve additional money for the parking lot. Is that correct, John? For somebody? I don't know.
Yeah, that is correct. That's uh phase three of the Red Willow Park West uh Meadow View Charter, so that is in your package, I believe, to, if you want to have a look at that.
And Council Hughes, that is in the ten-year capital right now, so in the ten-year capital plan is accommodating for.
Okay, perfect. So I'm going to do a, a BIR because I'm not expecting again for you guys to have the information on top of your head, but um, the specific thing that I, I'm looking for is a cost to have a sign. I don't care, I don't care if it's fancy or not fancy, that just indicates like this is the way to the White Spruce Forest Park, whether we have a sign saying welcome to the White Spruce Forest Park off of that main road or there's something off the main road that says this is the way to the park, because I realize that stuff, you guys know where it is intimately, you guys could find it when you're blindfolded, but for the public. I've met people there and they, they can't find it. Like they just see, they see a closed road, they see an apartment building, they see forest, and they're like, okay, I guess that's not here, and then they're driving around. So um, if there was something to indicate, yeah, you found it, even if you're parking on the road and walk down this gravel pit behind, gravel road behind the chain link fence um to let them know that they, they found it, that would be helpful. And so you guys can let me know what your intentions were on that in the BIR. Um, whether it has to just be a simple sign that just says White Spruce Forest this way, like a little guy, or if you actually plan to do something larger. Um, and then the other thing I would like to see uh the cost for is the, the, the decks in the fall, spring. Anytime there's frost, super slippery. So I'm not sure if there's something we could put to put additional tread on every board or every other board to allow it so people don't go skating when they're on those, because I'm just, I can see this as a, a hazard. Is, it's pretty, but it's not um functional, and we just need to get some kind of grip. I don't care how or what you guys do, but there needs to be some kind of grip on there for when there's ice or frost on that uh on the decks, on the boardwalks and the other little frigidaues. So I'll be, I'm going to just do a BIR and just ask you guys how much that is, and that was it for that. Um, so the other question I had, thank you guys for all that, is the cemetery, the Council Jolly had an IR about the cemetery. Um, and so I'm, I guess, I don't even know how to ask this, but it, it appears, and I've looked at the history of that BIR, and I want to thank Natalie for bringing it up, um, that it was somehow directed to transit. And then there's never been a discussion about reorganizing who's responsible for this area. And it, it seems quite odd to me that transit would be the winner because people who are dead require transit the least out of everybody in our city. So like, it doesn't seem like a remote match as a transit cemetery, and um I feel like it was almost like put, there's a default, and then just nothing has happened. So I have a couple of questions. Has there been a discussion about a reorganization of just reallocating it to someone else's position?
Yes.
Okay, and, and there's no one else in the city that's a better fit than the handy bus coordinator?
A- as it stands now, it's not forecast for change anytime soon, but there are some suffice to see some ongoing discussions as it relates overall to the organization that could happen.
Okay, and then, so it was moved over in twenty nineteen. Um, have we just not had any cemetery sales at all in the past four years? Or is it recent that we've now cut off sales?
I don't know anything about cutting off sales. I think Louise is, I see your face on the screen, and I'll ask her to comment.
Uh, thank you for the question, Council Hughes. No, we haven't stopped sales um at all. The business for the cemetery has continued as usual. When it came over in twenty nineteen, it's because there was an expectation that the, the handy bus coordinator would have some capacity once the commission was uh established. When that failed um or didn't pass, um, and with the increase we're seeing in handy bus use, the handy bus coordinator is struggling to do both services. It is being accomplished right now. Nothing is being dropped. It has just reached a point that is beyond the capacity of the handy bus coordinator, which is why uh we were just looking to try and fund a part-time position to help with the administration and the sales uh for cemetery.
Like, I, I just think like, there's a lot of FTEs in the organization, and the handy bus as far as a, a fit is like the most illogical fit ever. Like, I'm like, why don't we just give it to the customer service people at the front desk and have them coordinate it? Um, and you know, like, I, I just see other opportunities. I guess I'm just asking, have you guys had the thorough discussion about that or not?
Gosh, it's a ongoing, Council.
Okay, I'm going to be doing a motion on that. Um, the other question I had, the FTE count. So last year, it stated that we had eight hundred, six hundred and eighty-nine FTEs um in the system. And then this year, it says we have six hundred and eighty-five before we do the increase, and I'm just trying to reconcile those two numbers. Do we have any?
Probably be best to take that as an IR, BIR, and then we can reconcile that.
Sure.
And just refer to, was that in the budget document that you were seeing?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then one more question about IT. So the position that, I'm probably going to see Ryan right away. The position for um the, the trainer person that we have in there? Um, I'm trying to understand for their job function. Are they the ones who now be doing all the training on any new software? Or specifically, what would, what do you envision this person doing?
I, I think I'd ask maybe Joanne Graham to lead off with that, then Ryan.
Sure.
Certainly. Thanks for that question, uh, Council Hughes. So this, this individual is going to have two functions. So for the software that we have in-house, and I think back to the example of VIP, where we're developing very specific process-type training and process-type videos and documentation, I foresee this individual having uh a hand in doing that, in fact, probably creating those just as our, one of our staff did this year. When it comes to the uh software that we have that is more industry software, so you can think of things of uh Microsoft Excel and the like, they would be there to coordinate and resource external training because it can certainly be provided more cost-effectively externally. So there'll be a mix of those two functions. Ryan, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I, I would just add that uh we're over capacity on our um train resources as it is. So when Joanne's alluding to um, well, we had someone help out with it, well, they put in an extra two hundred hours a time beyond their regular schedule just specific to VIP to, to make that train um functional. So so if we think of this for ongoing, for future systems, I mean, at least then we have the capacity in-house to design it appropriately um, and to actually optimize the use of our existing systems.
And so oh, and one thing I might add to that too, we've talked a lot about um new systems they come in, but one of the items that was brought up by RMS when they did the uh IT review back in twenty twenty was that the ongoing training of existing systems is required as well, because over time, as you pass on information from one employee to another, you can lose some knowledge in that, in that transfer. And so part of this, this position is also there to ensure that all of our staff are always aware of how to use the software and optimize the use of that software. So through this training and through this individual, we're really going to be going a long way in ensuring that we get the best bang for our buck for the software investments that we've already made.
So what I'm hearing, it sounds like it's more like an administrative position than a IT position, like it's coordinating people's schedules, coordinating with outside agencies, and then uh some coordinating videos. Um, it sounds like more of an admin position than an IT specialist.
I, I can comment on this. The, I mean, this, this, this is a profession, right? This is actually what people learn to do in, in adult education, and it's not in any way uh an administrative role. If, if there is an administrative function, it's actually asking an admin person to coordinate the logistics of onsite training, but this is a, this is a profession that has taken higher education to design the training, to write the, the programming themselves, to understand how to translate technical material into a way that adults learn. This isn't, I do not want to trivialize this for all.
Okay, I just wanted a clarification on that, so thank you for that. Um, the other question I had was of the transit, um the, the transit contract. So I don't know if you want to go on camera, or I'll wait for anyone else's questions, and that's the last one I have.
Mike, any questions?
I know I don't.
Can you?
No, I'm good now.
Best. Good one, go ahead.
Thank you. My apologies to Diane already. I've given you this in advance, uh only because the conversational in-between uh uh sort of sparked this question. So the uh uh, the capital program to expand the transit uh uh parking facility at Leggett, is that going to be plumbed for um electrical buses in the future?
Uh, good question, Council Broadhead. Um, uh, maybe we'll turn it right over to Louise, just to talk about the specifics. Um, my, to my understanding, I don't think it is for the electrical um bus charging, just for additional buses, but I'll hand it over to Louise.
Oh, thank you for the question. Uh, so right now, no, because we have enough electrical charging stations for our existing electrical bus fleet. Um, there are potential other fuel options coming in place, hydrogen as well. So right now, this is strictly an expansion of the, the front of the, the building to increase the capacity for um bus parking. I'm sure as part of the uh design, there will be availability for future, uh depending on the different fuel types to, to in, or implement those into the facility.
Well, I raised the question only because there's a concerted effort by seemingly all levels of government for zero emission vehicles. Um, and the manufacturers are, you know, gearing up to provide those kind of vehicles. Problem is the infrastructure to actually run them and charge them and fuel them, whatever fuel source you have is, is lagging. So here we have an opportunity to expand. I was just questioning whether or not we were going to resume to have an opportunity to bring in more electric buses.
I, I'm sure that the, there will be a push in the future. Right now, our electric buses need to be charged multiple times during the day to, in order to complete a daily shift. So we actually need um the, we were very much on the front end of the purchase of electric buses. So as technology improves. So we actually need, the, we were very much on the front end of the purchase of electric buses. So as technology improves the battery life, then we'll get better.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yep.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I just have one question related to the insurance and claims resource. It's mentioned here that volume of claims has increased with our insurance and claims coordinator processing over three hundred claims where the industry standard is one hundred to one hundred and fifty. I just have a question of why we would be double of the industry standard.
If I can start and then Daria, Slow Car Manager will add to. So the frequency of our claims have increased over years, two hun- two, two hundred and two, twenty-five claims. Daria can maybe speak to why the claims have increased or the complexity also has increased in addition to the number.
Thank you. So one of the reasons that we know for sure is that during COVID, our Public Works team was not able to visit residents, that residents that had problem with their sewer system and the pipes under their property. So we had to process more plumbing invoices. So we know for that reason, the rest, it would just be a frequency of claims that we receive. Some of it could be because we don't have enough resources to proactively analyze claims that we receive to identify common reasons for situations that happen out in the community so that we can probably address them through training and other actions. But aside from that, we really don't know. We can't even forecast how many claims we're going to have. It just depends on what's happening in the community.
And there's always an, oh, um, Darian, their team reviewed the deductible and that has always, we always look at deductible rates per different categories and adjust them. So that when we adjust the deductibles for better savings on overall policies, that affects our increased claims too. And that's also been a part of it too.
And that's a good point. So some of it may have been due to increase in the duck, the duck, deductible, sorry. But we can't really tell you, you know, percentage of those versus just more situations occurring in the city that result in claims.
It's just interesting to read that we're double, you know, what's out there, right? It just doesn't seem accurate, but okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Council Jolly, do you have any more budget questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I gave you guys the heads up about two of the unfunded business cases. I'm sort of waiting on them. I want to I don't think we have any motions to unfund your proposed business cases, do we?
Not to date.
Great. So I, and I remember you, when you said the unfunded, you didn't want. I don't question you, what you've done to bring us the funded ones. I want to make sure that they all got passed because that's the priorities. But there's two unfunded business cases that really hit my radar. And that's the diversity and inclusion advisor and then the inclusive hiring program. And I don't need to ask you any questions about the value of both those. I think they're fantastic. So my only question to you is if I was to make the motion to move those to the funded side. It, it says in here, like, do you have the capacity? Or is this going to be actually providing you capacity to do stuff that you're already doing?
Um, I'll ask perhaps Ryan to chime in quickly, but yes, there is a capacity issue. So we don't have a plan.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the job description?
Help discuss it, but right, we've not provided any strategic guidance that would inform that. So this is probably about a year's worth in the making to get these folks in and squared away. So capacity is one of the reasons that they're falling a little bit. That's probably seems like a bit of a wishy-washy answer, but there is a bit of a chicken and egg piece. To have someone come in and have carte blanche to create a program is not useful because it doesn't meet the needs of the organization. So there's some homework that needs to be done, required to bring people in to set the stage for success. Just get people running around with buttons and sweat. You don't actually have a diversity and inclusion framework. I, I don't know if Ryan with HR, if you've got any comments on that.
I, I just add further that, that diversity and inclusion advisor could be looked at for a first period of time to engage consultant and build kind of the path that we want to walk. And then the advisor becomes the implementation. After, after that initial development, the advisor could be the implementation for, for programming and executing the plan, right? So so I, I just say that there, there is an element of design that needs to be done probably for a six-month period, maybe even a year, and then it turns into a multi-year implementation. And, and the inclusive hiring would be a program under that larger umbrella.
So if you say it's a chicken or the egg, what do I need to do to make sure that we have everything in place to do this?
Well, it, if you, we need the funding in order to set the conditions for that success.
Okay, so, but not funding for this advisor. It's a different.
I, I think if you did that, my recommendation would be we have to do some homework. Perhaps we use that funding to set the stage for the advisor in the first year.
I could even word my motion that way. And Ryan, the, the inclusive hiring, so we used to have for or two FTEs for part-time and, and the only reason they're not working for the city anymore is we ran out of funding. Is that? Or is there other factors that prevent us? Is I, I'd be willing to put that money back in the budget just so we can give these jobs back to these people? Or what else?
Yeah. So, so the pilot, the pilot funds have run out or effectively run out. So the, there is a program dollars that we would need permanently. And then secondarily, or maybe in line with that is the capacity and, and the people that facilitate with our, our third-party agencies, I've now allocated to other projects and in anticipation that that this program was, was not going to be renewed in twenty twenty-four. So they, so that's where the capacity issue comes in is, is I don't have someone to put on this to, to facilitate it.
And that would be the diversity and inclusion advisors' job as well.
You betcha. That gets you the capacity. I, I mean, I, I'd still like to get the the framework in place first, but that definitely would be a part of the capacity to deliver it.
I'll sit with you and maybe we can get the wording of the motion.
I think it's just that the first six months, two years, the flexibility to use the funds ultimately identified for that.
Maybe, maybe it's just, maybe it's just six months, the FTE.
Six months, two years, we'd have to do.
Okay. All right, I will. I'll sit with you and I can figure out. Okay. Um, I think that's it for questions except for Council Hughes has one that needs to go on camera. So there's motion provided, probably not, but.
I, I can do it if you want, Mayor. This is my job. Since I put us in this mess. The committee moving cameras subject for twenty twenty-four budget managers pursuit section twenty-four one A and twenty-one, twenty-five one C F eight.
Sure. You need to sort out online. Do we have any?
Yeah.
What did you say, Chris?
We're still lying.
Yeah, we have to vote. Okay.
Yeah, we have to vote.
Yeah. All those in favor of moving a camera?
That is to me.
It's unanimous. We just need to take ten seconds to stop by brass casting and set up the recove room.